Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Workshop Wednesday, June 4th. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please show everybody from council present. Up next, we have the review of the minutes from May 12th, 2025, combined meeting and the May 21st, 2025 meeting. Oh, I should say, May 12th, 2025, combined meeting one and two, and then May 21st, 2025, special meeting. Any comments, questions, concerns by council regarding that? Claire, I had one clarification on the the meeting number two for May 12th. Just to clarify, Mayor Pro Tim wasn't unanimous, right? I know we have in the minutes it says unanimous vote.
Thought it was.
Was he?
I don't remember anybody.
You two opposed. Mayor Pro Tim for the vote, right?
I didn't vote. I don't know why. I'm not sure what.
Oh, okay.
I thought they were silent, which is.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if they're silent.
I was silent. I don't know. I don't remember what the mayor.
For some reason, I thought there was a nay.
What Councilman McCarron said.
Oh, good. I could be incorrect. Other than that, any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Public hearing is now open for annexation resolution 04A-2025 Sabal 33300, Harney Road. Do we have anybody who'd like to step up and make a public comment regarding that before we head on? The public hearing will remain open until the end of the meeting, at which point it will be closed. Next up, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council member like to make a statement today? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward. We are at the public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a comment on a specific agenda item, please sign up with the city clerk and you'll be asked to come forward at the appropriate time. If not, if you don't have anything pertaining to a particular item, now is the time to come up and give public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. Seeing no movement, I am proceeding forward down to resolution ordinances and agreements. Up for adoption, again, this is just, we're just going over it. There is no adoption at this meeting tonight. It will be on Monday. We have resolution 2025-13, water allocation for June. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Up next, we have resolution 2025-14, staggering terms of commissions and boards. Just to explain why this was added, this is basically setting a hardline date for the boards and commissions where those terms will extend based on those dates throughout the year. The term is tied to now a seat designation instead of the individual. That means that as these go on, they'll always be consistent. We'll always know when the terms are expiring, when they're starting. It's not a guessing game of when somebody was appointed and when they exited essentially. It still has the same provisions that we normally do, which is if you're currently in a seat, if no appointment has been made or you haven't been reappointed, you still continue into that seat until you've been resigned or asked to step down or again, an appointment or reappointment has happened. Other than that, Jim, was there anything extra really added?
I think you hit all the highlights.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council regarding that resolution?
No, sir.
Hearing none, proceeding forward. City manager report.
All righty. On the written report, I said I didn't have an update on the capital equipment, but since the report was out, we did get word that our VAC truck or hydro excavator is off the assembly line, so we're hoping to have delivery of that in July. For those who may not be in the loop on this, we're getting a vehicle to replace our sewer jetter and also it will do hydro excavation, so basically forcing water and vacuuming up debris so we can do kind of targeted excavations for like water valves and things like that without disturbing a larger area. So it's going to replace some, you know, old equipment as well as far as for the sewer plant, for the sewer jetter. As far as charter and code updates, I'm going to lump the city specifications for streets and stormwater pertinences in there. We met with Public Works and I met with CDM Smith this afternoon. Yeah, this afternoon and went through some of the updates that we have in place so far. We nailed down 150 feet as being the absolute minimum distance between points of ingress and egress for a community that will have 50 or more dwelling units in it. That's still relatively close and may not meet sightline and things like that. But in, you know, looking at it from kind of an emergency services perspective and, you know, having apparatus at, say, an accident scene, that seemed to be the absolute minimum that, you know, would be allow for safe operation of an emergency scene like that. It may end up being more by the time we get it to the planning commission, but that's where we are right now.
Councilor Tillman?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, have, are we looking at having the spacing requirement tied to the speed limit of the adjacent street, of the street that it empties out into?
No, not at this point because we're also looking at potentially having a citywide speed limit for residential streets and that would leave very few streets that would not be 20 miles an hour. So basically the state highways and they're going to have their own sight distance requirements based on the speed limit. And sight distance is based in part on the speed limit of the road. So that's kind of an automatic function anyhow. But as far as the distance between entrances, no, we didn't really think about or discuss speed limits. We certainly can going forward, see if that would be a factor beyond what we do as far as the general sight lines and stuff.
If we're looking at setting a citywide speed limit on residential streets, then that would kind of kill both birds with one stone.
20 or below. We're looking to basically put administrative action out. Yep, 20 or below on city streets. But again, we can't obviously do.
Obviously can't do it.
Highway, yeah.
Right.
So that wouldn't be affected, but it would, it kind of ties everything back in line with what the new developments are. I mean, I think everything newer is 20, correct?
I think more recent ones are 20.
More recent are 20. You have some other ones like Grand, which I think Grand's 25 right now. I think Carnival's 25. I think Fairgrounds is 25. I think Fairgrounds is 25, is it? I don't know.
Baumgartner's 25.
Baumgartner's 25, yeah. So essentially those main stretches would be the ones coming down. But it's not going to raise anywhere that has like a 15 mile per hour speed limit or anything like that. It's not going to raise them to 20. It's going to be 20 or below. And that's just an additional traffic calming.
And we just, we haven't gone around and counted speed limit signs and figured out the cost to replace all of those yet. So that's, we're not going to do it tomorrow by any means. Let's see, going on, let's see. So the Riffles Lane, Storm Jane, the contract, we will hopefully have that reviewed by special counsel in the near future. We didn't want to execute that without a legal review on it, so that one's still pending.
Jim, do you want to give the current council an update on that, the special counsel?
So we've, I've worked back and forth a little bit with Attorney Gallow to extend services on a limited basis to the city while we are essentially between city attorneys. He was agreeable to it with some limitations and some pricing variables. And basically, you know, we will make specific requests for him to review this particular item. We'll track that. We will maintain the same escrow account that we have with the city attorney currently and just keep that going. So basically, he will be available as needed.
Until we bring on the new council, essentially. Well, technically till September, essentially.
Right, up until, up until September. So that's kind of where we are on the legal front until, you know, until we.
We post out the city attorney, right? Yep, so city attorney is posted out. Again, depending on how many inquiries we have, we want to make sure we have a wide selection. So I don't know how long that'll take, but if we're not getting enough responses in 30 days, you know, it'll kind of be what we did before, we'll extend it and take a deeper look. But, you know, one of the things is, you know, I'll definitely be looking around when I go down for MML, talking with the services they have out there and some of the attorneys that'll be there. So again, we're in the search, but we do need to still make sure we have some coverage as we're going through that so we can still press items on that need it.
Let's see. Yeah, FY24 sewer rehab, the grading permit's been closed now. We're just awaiting final invoices from the contractor, so hopefully, hopefully that'll come through this month and we can close it out before the fiscal year ends. Westview Drive, construction continues. I know the Public Works report has a little bit more detail in there, but as of when we did these reports, the second phase of the water line was completed and had passed pressure testing, so the service lines were going to be connected, so that's ongoing. So hopefully within the next, within the next month, they will be on to the third and final phase, which is Pump House Road up to Roberts Mill. So fewer, fewer service lines and such on that stretch to connect. Let's see, did want to mention for Monday, I would like to add on the agenda acceptance of the Meads Crossing infrastructure. I'm just waiting on confirmation from Public Works that the last few punch list items were indeed corrected out there. That's been kind of an ongoing process of inspections, repairs, more inspections, revealing a couple more repairs and back and forth. So it sounds like, you know, they finally, we were down to, I think, five items and I think they finally got those taken care of. So assuming I get that confirmation, I will have a memo in, out to you before the Monday meeting.
Jim, were we ever able to trace down the sewer inflow issues?
There were a lot of, I'll say mitigating actions that the developer took. They installed some, I guess, watertight manhole covers. Some of the manholes were in the flow channel during heavy rains in the streets and we expect that there was a bit of inflow from that. So they, they did the waterproof covers or liners that go under the manhole to, I don't know that they're actually waterproof, but they greatly reduced.
Greatly reduced the amount of water.
The flows. And I know there were some other actions that they took, but that's the one that comes to mind, that they did realize that some of the manholes were in, in the flow channel during heavy rains. There still is some increase at the pumping station there after rain events, but in, you know, reviewing the figures, DPW is accepting them as an acceptable number. You know, still a little bit disappointed that a system so new is showing that kind of fluctuation. But, you know, the developer really has gone through and done everything really that we've asked them to do and short of going inside people's houses to try to inspect their plumbing for illicit connections, which we can't do with, you know, going in private property. That's the only thing that we left that we could do to rule out causes of those increases. So it's, it's greatly improved to an acceptable level. So assuming that comes through Monday, then we'll be starting the two-year maintenance period. Last month, we talked about the Meadowbrook subdivision and they had just closed out that two-year maintenance period, so we're just going to be getting into that with the Meads Crossing infrastructure. So they'll post a maintenance bond that will hold for two years. So if anything does workmanship wise, you know, if anything fails in that two years, the developer will be required to fix it or we will use that maintenance bond to cover the cost of it. See, last thing. And this isn't really a city-specific item, but I don't know when this is going to happen, but State Highway received a concern regarding traffic blocking the firehouse entrance and vehicles having difficulty getting out of the driveway during peak times when, when vehicles were parked in front of the driveway. There is a sign, you know, advising not to block the driveway, but people still do it regularly. In some circumstances, State Highway will do a pavement treatment or striping in front of, you know, firehouse driveways and, yeah. So they may be doing that in the future. It's
Maybe a left turn signal will help.
You know, stations, I guess, but since a complaint did come in about it, they decided they would take action. So just wanted to give you a heads up with that, that, you know, sometime in the not-too-distant future, I don't have a date from SHA, but the pavement out in front of the firehouse is going to look different. So you heard it here first.
Do we have any update about the RRFBs?
No, sir.
Any update about the left turn signal that they promised us they would look into putting up?
Well, as far as I'm aware, it's actually on the queue.
It's, it's.
We're in the queue. I just, I know they're waiting funding and that's an issue right now.
Well, funded and then again, what they consider safety priorities is basically what's driving that.
Right, so we, we are, right. We are on the task list.
But that is one of the issues about blocking the firehouse, the fact of the backups from, from York Street there and the signal would help, so maybe.
It very well may if it can reduce the stacking or the queuing.
Right.
So, yep, okay. That is all that I have for this evening unless somebody has questions about my report or if you want to jump into the.
I noticed Xfinity had downtown tied up for a couple of days. Is that over or do you, or do you know what they were doing or why, why we?
I believe they were doing fiber installation.
Yeah, Xfinity has expanded fiber in the area. I got an, yeah, I got an email regarding it.
Bit of a challenge for a couple of days, but I guess it's.
Yep, they were, they were hanging, hanging wires on the existing infrastructure and of course tying up traffic while they did it.
They're facing the competition from Antietam. Suddenly it's, oh, we need to get more fiber in Tontytown.
That fiber that was supposed to come how many years ago? Yep.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Department reports, Jim? I guess, did you have anything extra?
If there's any, any questions, I'll get answers for Monday if I can't do it tonight.
Any additional questions on the department reports?
Did they, were they successful in rounding up the randy turtles from the lake?
I believe they were. I can get some more details for Monday night from our Parks and Rec director.
Sheer curiosity, that's.
Years ago, we allowed trapping of the turtles for culinary purposes.
Additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward to old business ordinance 06-2025, fiscal year 2025, 2026 operating budget. As all you guys are aware, Jim, did you send out the email in the new meeting for the 18th? I think it's in your weekly report, right?
I did not send anything out today for it.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember if it was in your weekly report. So for anybody who isn't aware, there is a, going to be an extra council meeting on June 18th at 7:30 PM, which is going to be the public hearing in relation to the budget. So we will have an additional workshop meeting in regards to the budget. But besides that, I am opening it up to public, or not public comment, questions and comments by the council. I don't think nothing's changed from the last time we talked about it, right, Jim? I don't think we've made any adjustments. Hearing none, I'm going to proceed forward. New business monthly financial report, questions, comments, concerns by council regarding that? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. Accounts payables, questions, comments, concerns by council regarding that? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Approval of memorial drive water line replacement design. Jim, did you have any comments you wanted to make before I?
Brian Lubinow from CDM Smith is going to be joining us Monday and he can speak to that in a little bit more detail. Generally, we utilize our consultant engineer for, I'll say, the majority of our infrastructure projects, particularly water sewer related, because they have a very in-depth knowledge of our systems and our specs, since they helped develop our specs. So, but anything over a certain threshold, we, for one thing, over $10,000, council has to approve professional services. And also with our general consulting with CDM Smith, when we exceed a certain threshold for a project, they'll put together a proposal and then we get a special approval for that. So the proposal that's in the packet is for design as well as bidding and construction services, inspection and basically a turnkey kind of a deal with them. So they'll be here Monday night to answer any, any questions you may have about it or if you have any this evening, I can certainly give it a shot.
Yeah, does anybody have any to relay before we get to Monday? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. So this is the one actual item that we do have for tonight, which is the appointment of the Director of Economic Development. If you haven't had a chance, you should have in your current papers, the resume for Robert E. Jones, who is the person I'm looking to put out for economic development. We did interviews, we had what, 12 app, was it 11 applicants, 12 applicants? Maybe nine?
I think it was nine.
It might have been nine. Nine applicants. You know, we did the interviews, we conducted them all and at the end of the day, I would say Robert, Robert Jones definitely had the knowledge of doing a Main Street program. He had the knowledge of getting the community involved in it. I think he'd be a good fit here as far as staff goes and I think he'll do a good job coming on board. Jim, do you remember what, I know we opened it up all the way to the 70,000 range. Did you want to discuss at all where we landed with that?
We ended up basically kind of mid-range, right at the budgeted amount.
Where the, yeah, where the previous economic development director was, so. We didn't go too high. We came right about where we were before, so. Other than that, I open it up for questions, comments, concerns by council.
One thing I think we should bring up tonight is a lot of correspondence back and forth about the America 250 Committee and your responses to the emails made a lot of sense. If we have information to gain from going to the MML conference and retrieving some of that, it'd probably be best to kind of put that on the burner for July. But I think it's really important that we get involved in this. It really is. And then again, it should be a community-wide effort, not only council, but with the museum and other civic organizations, the Lions and Legion and everybody else that's involved in our, in our town's functioning. So let's make sure that we devote enough time to get that thing done. The, the outline sent in, in the email sort of made a lot of sense. We should probably consider some of those suggestions pretty seriously, so.
Yep, and I know I've, me and the city manager, we've discussed as far as like committees and stuff like that goes, our only worry is basically spinning wheels in a committee with something that we already have a little time to get together. And, you know, my response as far as waiting for MML, again, I don't want us to sit here and spin wheels when we don't have all that information that's been gathered by MML. And I, I was going to surprise this for you in July, but I do hope, my hope is that you'll take lead as the liaison since you're kind of already involved in this.
Be happy to do it.
I was going to talk with the, I was going to talk with the after the meeting and then say it in July, but.
Duplicate my efforts, that's all.
Well, that's a, I don't, I don't want to put a bunch of cooks in the kitchen, you know what I mean?
Well, it's, it's important to have a community effort. It shouldn't be museum doing one thing and the council doing one thing and the legion doing one thing and the Lions doing one thing. We should all be doing this together and we need to have, I just need, I don't know how we, maybe can, maybe we can send out a pre-alert email to the various stakeholders that we're planning to do this and we're looking for participation from their particular group and be thinking of somebody to suggest to serve on a committee or something.
I know one of the biggest talks, you know, I have with the city managers, we want the civic organizations to be engaged because again, they're the biggest, they're going to be some of the biggest pieces to this, is their participation. And, you know, that's how it traditionally is for events like this, is really the civic organizations, historic museums, everything from the Legion, the Lions Club. We want to make sure everybody does get involved. And again, we're, we are going to be dedicated, you know, a decent amount of staff time. We're going to have Parks and Rec working on it. We're going to have economic development working on it. And when we bring the administrative assistant on board, I'm going to try to work as far as making sure they're getting coordinated in between all of that as well. So again, we're going to, we're going to dedicate staff time to it and the hope is put in the council liaison, that'll kind of keep information flowing back and forth between the council and the organizations. And again, the biggest thing is to make sure we're not spinning wheels while we're trying to get this done.
I had a, I had a discussion with Jim Thomas and his envisioned, you know, with his envisioned Tontytown group and yesterday, actually. And they're very interested in becoming part of this also. Jim had a lot of energy and passion for it. We actually were going through the old Tontytown walking tour pamphlets. I happen to have a couple of those in the house. We were kind of walking through that and maybe, you know, we can use that as some kind of starter place, but, and I think that there's a, there's a spot for economic development in this too, because they probably can, might know where to go for, for grants and money and stuff like that that can help. So, yeah, so we're, I, I think that we've got, we've got some folks who can get in and get, get a good start and work together, so.
Yep, and, you know, one of the things I talked to Jim about was when staff does get involved and they're getting boots on the ground and kind of getting it all organized, is looking at what the recommendation's going for as far as what we need to do at this table. You know, whether they believe we need to get a committee together or whether that would kind of hamper in regards to, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen. The biggest thing is making sure we are prepared for it and we do have things organized for it. And again, you know, economic development, my biggest thing is making sure we do get the Main Street community involved as well. And, you know, Parks and Rec, again, they do all of our current ceremonies and memorials and everything like that, so that's important as well. Lorena has those good connections with all the civic organizations. So again, we're, we're making strides towards it, but I want to make sure we, here at the council, you know, we come with the information after that MML session so we can actually be briefed on what they're looking at at the state level, at the fed level and everything like that. Because, you know, we could be spinning circles up here without knowing what the full scale of it is right now. Yeah, it could basically change everything.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense until we get the information from.
That's the biggest thing. Again, it isn't to delay this further, it's just to make sure when we come to this table to really hash it out between us. And again, we'll have a workshop, during the workshop in July, we'll go over that. But I want to make sure we come here with information. It isn't just us guessing what we should do and everything like that. So again, it wasn't to delay any of that. We are moving on track with it and I checked with the other mayors, the other municipalities, and they're right about where we are right now. So again, I think we're on a good track so far, but we'll make sure it happens.
Circling back to Mr. Jones, the salary would be $58,154.
I forgot we're even still, we're still on.
That was still the.
Okay.
I kind of was wondering.
Thanks for keeping us on track.
So let's, let's circle back to the appointment. Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding the appointment? Hearing none, I am looking for a motion in regards to it.
I move that we appoint Robert Jones as the Economic Development Director.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Jim, make sure to make contact with.
I will reach out to him tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Or tonight.
Up next, we have approval of special event permit, Good News Club, Roth Avenue Park, July 7th through July 11th, 2025. Any comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Approval of Catholic charities lease renewal. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Well, actually, we're adjourned. So that works out.
We're done. And that's, that's a wrap.
So before we adjourn, I am closing the public hearing regarding the annexation resolution 04A-2025 Sabal 3300, Harney Road. Does anybody have any public comment to make regards to the annexation resolution? Seeing no movement, the public comment is closed. I am now looking for a motion of adjournment by council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, sure, you betcha.